And welcome to the Holt Board of Ed 20th, 2020. I'd like to call to order the meeting, but before we do so, Ms. Bureau, if you could do roll call for all the board members in their presence.
Coligan. Back in.
Yes.
Dalton.
Here.
Perry.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Is Coligan here? Laura Coligan.
I can see her, but we can't hear you.
You can't hear me?
No, I can't hear Laura.
Yeah. She's here. She's here.
Okay. Bureau, I'm here.
Holgren.
Seven, we're all here. Yep, and Holgren. Yep.
I'm here.
All right, thank you. So we do have a quorum up next. Dr. Horneck, if you can lead us to the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, I'm actually going to stand and I'm going to say what I normally would say. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. President Perry, the mission and guests with the Board of Education, the mission of Holt Public Schools is to innovate, educate, and inspire, empowering all students to make a positive impact in their communities. The vision is, the vision of Holt Public Schools is to empower our learning community to make a positive impact on the world.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Horneck.
Welcome.
At this time, I'd like to observe a moment of silence for one of our students, David, who had passed recently. Thank you, and our prayers are with his family. Changes to the agenda, I just have one of those that I know of. The student representatives are not with us this evening, so we will scratch six, one. So with that, next on our agenda is public comment, and I know we do have some individuals that are waiting to speak, so I'll turn that over to you, Ms. Bureau.
First is Jimmy Paviglio. Is here, is he here and does he want to speak tonight?
Jimmy, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Ms. Bureau, there is not a name like that on the participant list.
All right, thank you. Sally Hawk Harrison.
I don't know, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm, this Zoom is very new technology to me. I want to express my thanks to you as the school board and Dr. David for all that you've done during this last month, five weeks now, to all the students and teachers and all of that, the support that you have given. I know there's been a lot of frustration with a lot of the parents, with them not having any kind of lessons to be given to their kids. And I know that there have been teachers that have stepped up and actually gathered things and mailed things and whatever, however they've gotten them to them. And I just want to thank you for that because this is very frustrating for a lot of people that are thrown into this because, you know, those that are called to teach, teach. And I'm a nurse, I'm not a teacher, and I'm in a home where there's other children from the little guy that I take care of. And they have been very frustrated with getting him anything to do, majorly the first grader that goes to Wilcox that I've talked about before. And he was actually very much looking forward to doing the, oh, what do you call it, the thing over spring break where they have the intercession? And then he didn't get to do that. So he was very frustrated with that. But I just want to thank all of you that, that you're doing, you're doing a bang up job, as my mom would say. And just keep doing it. I mean, keep praising those teachers because I know they want to be back in the classroom. I know they want to be doing stuff, so. That's my comment, and I thank you, and you're doing great.
And that's all I have on the list for tonight.
Okay, if there is no other, I will close the public comment session of the board meeting. And move to tenant tenure recognition. Normally, we have a reception for our teachers, but under the circumstances, we don't. And if you would, Mr. Backin, talk about these individuals and recognize them.
Yeah, thank you, President Perry. You know, and I've said for a long time that of the favorite parts that I have about being on Board of Education at whole, certainly graduation is one. The new teacher breakfast that we do where we meet all our new staff that we're bringing on, on is another. And then this, this teacher tenure review is my third, and it is really too bad that we didn't get to go through the normal process for these teachers to be celebrated because it is not only a tremendous group of educators that we're lucky to have. I mean, this is a really, it's a group of cool cats. These are some really, really neat folks that we have here that have done a great job for, for our kids in our district. And, you know, I always, I always look forward to the, when we can get together, we can celebrate these teachers and as some, you know, know, like the teacher tenure breakfast or the teacher, new teacher orientation breakfast, there's usually some shenanigans that I like to work into those to try to have some fun and because it is just exciting to see such great, great teachers that we have in addition to all the great administrators for their buildings that take so much time and so much care in writing up these packets. But, you know, as Sally said, it's, it's a different world that we're in right now. And, and we all just have to be patient with each other. You know, the, you know, it's, it's challenging for some parents who else may be at home and be busy. We're trying to manage nap time and I'm feeding my kids Taco Bell for lunch and everything else is, we're just trying to get through. But at the same point, we've got fabulous educators that absolutely love our children. And if they could, they'd be, they would prefer to be in the classroom with them. And they're doing just, in my, my opinion, a fabulous job of shifting their way of educating. And this group of, of teachers is a great example of that. So what I'd like to do is just take a moment and read through the teachers that were receiving tenure at this time by building. So first up, I'll start at Diamond Dale Elementary School. We have Brooke Abbey. At Midway Elementary School, we have Jaclyn Stenzel. At the Washington Woods Middle School, Richard Merritt. At Hope Middle School, Carrie Columbia, Jennifer Jones, Colleen Merciniak Jennings, Amy Rader, Tiffany Reeser, and Danielle Hassanwinkle. Then at the junior high, Daniel Stafford and Mary Weaver. And finally, at the high school, Sarah Ashman, Jason Dowling, Gretchen Gibbs, Joshua Jones, Jessica Coffold, Nicole Lawn, Lowen, Gregory Miller, Rob Rosen, Gavin Sykes McLaughlin, and Jonathan Watson. And it would have been really nice if we could all be in one place celebrating them, but we should be, you know, fortunate as a district to have such great educators that we do and well deserved this tenure recognition. So thank you, President Perry, for letting me share that on their behalf.
Thank you for doing that, Mr. Backin. So we'll move to the board minutes. Board members, you do have in your board packet, the special board meeting of March 9th, 2020. And when you have a chance to have reviewed it, I would entertain a motion. I think you were on mute there.
There we go. I will make a motion to accept the the special or the these are special meeting minutes, right, from the committee of the whole from March 9th, 2020 as presented.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We'll move next to the regular board meeting minutes of the same date, March 9th, 2020. And I would entertain a motion if you have a chance to read.
I move, we accept the regular board meeting of March 9th, 2020 minutes.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. We'll move next to the bills of the district for March of 2020. Board members, you have in your pack, packet, a listing of the disbursements, both by check and credit card.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
Second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, gifts, we have $650 for pay it forward to the lunch account and $500 for the 3D printing supplies. I don't know if you want to add anything to that, Dr. Horneck?
You know, it would be, yes, this is very timely. Our public is amazing. We are not only feeding our students breakfast and lunch in remote locations, but our community is continuing sponsor us to allow us to distribute grocery packs as well. Those donations have been very well received. And then finally, we have a number of us, including myself, have 3D printers and we're printing face shields. Well, in an effort to replace the filament that we're using, we have members of the public who have kindly donated and we've ordered replacement filament, which should be arriving this week. So just a very generous public right now. And stay tuned, we had more donations come in today, so next month we'll be doing this again.
All right, awesome. So I would look for a motion to accept these two gifts.
Make a motion to accept the gifts of the 650 and the 500 for the 3D printing.
Second.
I have a first and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Ms. Coligan, I don't know if you guys had a chance to meet last month or not?
No, they didn't have a meeting in April, so I don't know if we'll meet again this year or not.
Okay. So that moves us to board policy update. Ms. Bureau.
Sorry, I've got the lot tonight. With all the changes, Neola has provided us a few updates and some guidance. Later in the meeting, we're going to ask for two resolutions. One, giving the superintendent powers to make changes during the, that fit with the governor's executive order. And then the second one kind of tightens those up, and we'll do that a little bit later. We received three updates. Let me go over to my policy page real quick. We received three three updates. The spring update had 12 policy updates. We're going to ask for approval of nine of them tonight. The majority of them are cleaning up language from the pupil accounting offices and and we can go over those a little bit later. There were two that we wanted some more information on before we made any changes. We're, so we're going to table 5200 and 5335. One had to do with special ed and the other one I will remember in just a minute when I get to the legal update on that. And there's a third one that we didn't need to do anything with regarding the health class because we already had the language in that the state is now requiring everybody to have. So again, we were ahead of the curve on that one, which is always a nice feeling. They also provided us two coronavirus updates and those updates, one included the resolutions. And then a lot of legal briefs and just the actual language to the to what the governor was saying. So we had the actual copies of it. The second one, you know, and then they also had just some reissue and some things that we should highlight that's already in our policy that the public should be aware of if there were any questions on it. The third one was kind of an interesting one. They gave us what they called their annual checklist and a copy of what they call the Michigan Student Handbook. So there's the annual notice in the student handbook. And so I went looking through those. And the annual notice is a big checklist. When we were going through policy, there were, we ran across time and time again, we'll do this yearly, we'll add this here, will, needs to be updated every six months, things like that. We thought, how in the heck are we ever going to remember all of that? They actually send out a yearly checklist for us to do that. So we got our yearly checklist, which was super nice. And then the handbook, we just redid ours and we also did, we did the student handbook and then we did the program planning manual. What theirs is, is actually both combined. And again, it's kind of nice because they have in there legally, everything that they think we should have in it. So even though we've done ours, now we have a second sample so we can go and kind of cross-reference and make sure that, well, I think ours is pretty darn complete. And I think that staff did a super amazing job on both of them. I'm not seeing anything that's lacking. This would be a good way to have a second or third or fourth set of eyes, just to make sure that we are crystal clear on that. Especially since one of the things that we are looking to update tonight, there was a drafting notice in there. One of them had a drafting notice for the guidelines. Make sure that you update the guidelines to or have this, and our guidelines weren't there. And then another one made a suggestion that it be something that is put into the student handbook as one way of disseminating the information. So really good, there was a lot. There was a lot of stuff. Amy, Laura, Dr. How, Dr. Horneck and Mrs. Lopez and I met a week ago to go over them. So we'll table the two. We'll, you all have copies of the changes. The changes are in green. What's being struck out is in red, so they're all nice, neat and clean. There shouldn't be any typos or anything in them, and it should be straightforward. So if you read those, we can talk about those a little bit later. And then we'll go through the legal briefs of exactly why they need to be changed. So a lot of work in policy this month.
Thank you. You're on mute, Mark, President Perry.
Yeah, I just figured that out. Dr. Horneck, your superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. By the way, would, I understand the need to meet on Zoom, but I miss all of you and our faculty and staff miss the students we serve and the families we serve to that end. I know you can read my superintendent's report. I'm going to highlight just a few things. Much of the academic work is actually captured by our curriculum team. As a result, I'm going to attempt to avoid duplicating that. I'd like to highlight the fact that since the mandated closure, our custodians have been sanitizing and deep cleaning. We had a group volunteer to adopt the outside of our schools. In addition, our custodians have gone around and continue to pick up trash. I continue to jog through our, our learning community and I'm seeing a much cleaner learning community and especially Holt Public. And I'm tickled with that. I'd also like to highlight, I'm seeing tremendous work being done. And I just have great empathy for all the work that's going on. The continuity of learning plan was incredible. I know we have, we have folks out there creating paper pencil packets. That's not easy to do. We're distributing Chromebooks right now to our families. None of this is easy and we're, we're all trained to do education face to face, but we're making the transition. And I'm, I'm very proud of the work and I just want our public to know we're, we're going to provide the grace and space to do and ask that everyone does their best moving forward. I'd also also like to highlight, lots of also's there, food service. The food service department continues to feed. Okay, they are doing an outstanding job. And I'll get to some specifics as I turn the page. Our technology team has created a coronavirus badge and you're going to find many of our updates on our main page under the coronavirus badge. And that's the first thing that pops up along with meeting notifications and food service notification. I know that I'm leaving a lot of stuff off comment here, but please glance at this. We took the opportunity in coordination with our human resources department to assign a series of trainings to our, our employees over the past month. We had employees working on student mental health modules, medication administration basics, ADA overview, conflict management, staff to staff, conflict management, student to student, FERPA, child abuse mandated reporting, child abuse identification and intervention. So while we weren't able to see one another, work was still continuing behind the scenes and I'm really happy about that. Now to some of our statistics, our food service team has, I said over here, but has served just under 10,000 meals during the school closure, distributed over 2,500 grocery packs. And I can tell you that I'm, I'm on a weekly call with our, our foods, food bank partners who are feeling like our outreach is actually helping them tremendously. They're not feeling overwhelmed right now. So I believe because we're going into the neighborhoods, we're delivering the food on our food bus, our, our food bank partners are able to continue to rebuild their stock because ordering food isn't like it comes in the next day. The, the Holt Community Food Bank ordered food approximately April 1st and it's due in on Wednesday. So, I mean, that's a three week turnaround, so it's a win-win right now. In addition, as a district and a learning community, we've donated. The public has a lot to do with this. Many of the disinfectant wipe, Clorox wipe jugs were donated on the front end. We knew we were not returning back to school, so we donated them to our medical provider heroes. 595 jugs of disinfectant wipes. We have now printed 700 face shield frames. I had 380 at the time of press of this, but it's now 700 on our 3D printers. 363 goggles were donated. We're not going to be going into labs right now, so we handed those off to our medical providers helping, hoping that we're saving lives. 122 masks were donated, 116 bottles of sanitizer and three boxes of gloves. In dealing with the coronavirus, we have closed our playgrounds and that's in an effort to just keep everyone healthy. I'd also like to share that again, a lot of heavy lifting was done by our curriculum office and they, they put a lot of effort with their team into the continuity of learning plan that was approved last, I believe, last Thursday officially. And we're on, on the final phase of trying to determine exactly what our grading policy will look like at the 912. K8 is, is pretty set, 912, we're, we're still putting the final touches on that, but hope to publish that yet this week. So there you have it.
All right, thank you, Dr. Horneck. I just had a few comments. First of all, I'd like to announce that the finance committee of the board is going to be activated on a monthly basis, and that's because of the issues that you saw in your board packet. With our upcoming budget for this year and for 2021, there's going to be, have to be a lot of work to be done. Also, we're going to be dealing with more and more compliance issues that we need to take a look at. And there may be in there some opportunities as well for us to get some type of grant funding, so. Like to get that finance committee back on track, meeting monthly. And then I want to spend a little bit of time talking about fund balance. I know it's been a few months. I mentioned that we were over 10% for the first time. And over the years, you know, there are critics that would say that 10% is too much or that, you know, we should spend down this money. Today's a very good reason for why we did what we did back in those years. And, you know, you might say, well, this is unprecedented. But if you remember back in 2000, when this district had teachers that went unpaid for four or five days to balance the budget, that was unprecedented. 2008, 2009 was unprecedented and it took us 10 years to recover from that. So my hat's off to all those people that were involved in, in, in getting us where we're at. And that's going to pay big dividends for us in the upcoming years as the state is going to have problems with meeting their obligations to us on a per pupil foundation allowance. And then lastly, I just want to sort of pile on with what Dr. Horneck has said. That food service, that, that's something to, to see. It's amazing because not only are we feeding our students, but we're feeding families as well. And it's, it's just an awesome thing for this district to be doing. It's not something that, that, you know, was required of us. It was something that, you know, volunteers, churches, individuals, food banks all pitched in to help us out and, you know, this district is delivering. And then also, I'd like to mention those individuals too, who are volunteering their time to check in with individual students. We have employees that have, you know, been not in the buildings, but at the same time, they're checking in with those individuals, kids that they have risk that they might not be doing exactly what they should be doing. So again, a lot of gratitude to those individuals. And that's it for me. We'll move to district presentations in the curriculum department. Steve? Or Jessica?
Hey, everybody. How are you?
Good.
Like my fifth Zoom today, it starts getting a little surreal after a while, but you know, here we are. My children now know when they come in the basement to like sneak down the stairs because they don't know who might be looking at them, so they're well trained. And I just wanted to take some time to make sure you didn't have any questions about the guidelines for continuous learning, the plan that was approved by the ISD last week, as well as the attached documents. There's the Q and A document for staff that you all have seen. And then David shared the Q and A document for community that was sent out separately. And then there's also a resource guide that's linked within it. And it's a lot of text. It's a lot to think about. But we wanted to make sure that you all had any questions you had answered. Knowing that there is a caveat within the guidelines that there, even though it's approved by the ISD, it is an amendable document. And we only know what we know when we know it, so things have changed. So things have changed rapidly for a while there. So, you know, as things develop, if we do find we need to massage here and there to make it work for our community, we're open to doing that. So we just wanted to give you a chance to ask any questions or, you know, share anything with you that you might want to know more about.
Has there been any decision on summer school?
So summer school, it depends on what grade level. The high school has always ran a tuition-based summer school that required attendance. We know that a lot of our local universities and colleges are moving to all online summer schools. Our normal summer school principal, Kim Reichardt, we, has reached out to ask if we could go completely online with appointment-based only proctored assessments that would honor social distancing practices. So for the high school, we do intend to figure that out. But I'm, I'm not sure about K3 is the other area we sometimes offer summer stuff.
So we received a grant, it's probably about a month and a half ago, I think it was 35A9, which can be used to run summer school for K through three students with a focus on literacy. A memo just came out that if school districts choose not to run summer school this year, that money could be carried over to the following year to run summer school. The question that is unknown is will we get another grant with another 35A9 or is it just the same amount? So as a central office team and building principals, we haven't landed on, if we're going to, what route we're going to take yet. We're, we're trying to get through this time first and then we will kind of evaluate next steps with the money.
Is this a good time? Can I ask a question or?
Let me try, and then with four through eighth grade, if we choose to do summer school, at this point, we have no funding. The grant was for K through three, so four through eight would have to be through at-risk funding, general budget, which is not, there's not a lot there, so more to come.
Yeah, go ahead Laura.
I was just wondering, because we're talking about funding in summer school. I was wondering with the technology, I've heard great things about with the buildings, but did we have enough technology for all the requests? Or where, where did we land with that if you guys have, if you even know yet, I just wondered.
We have deployed over 1,200 Chromebooks right now. I'm so proud of our technology leaders and principals. It's been just a monumental effort. Elliot is still deploying junior high, says another day, and so does Woods. They're really, we have a giant Excel spreadsheet that's district-wide by families and we assigned families to buildings, so they didn't have to go from, to two different buildings to get devices. And they've been so good about talking to each other about who is taking care of every family and I've, I've been so proud of them. That they are coming in though with, okay, we've only got 45 left and I've got 37 people on the waiting list. So we have a round two of deployment coming up based on the phone calls that are being made. And I keep thinking of that scene in It's a Wonderful Life where there's a run on the bank and at the end he's got the $2 bills left. If you know what I'm talking about, he's like, we made it, there's just two left. That's how it will be, that by Thursday when everyone's deployed, it'll be scraping by. As of right now, it looks like each building will just, will barely make it by. We're deploying everything that we've got.
Well, that's, that, you guys are doing awesome work, but that's why I was just wondering as a board, if we need to be proactive and get a few extra ordered. I would, I just hate for us to wait a week or two and say we need some if we can do that now, even if we ended up not needing them, but being sure that we're in a proactive mode for you guys.
So I can touch on that a little bit Laura. All title funds have been approved to reallocate to purchase Chromebooks. So any budget line items in Title I, II and IV can be reallocated and shifted to purchase Chromebooks without going over the, the budget max. So we're in the process of figuring out what funding we have left to do that and we'll round that up on Friday to order them. But the rumor as they're about, and I know that Kevin's on here and maybe Jess has heard, I know it's at least a month and a half, two months out to actually getting them, to back up.
That's what I wondered about ordering whenever we could, because I knew it was going to be probably a, you know.
So we'll use those title funds to replenish back in the building and the checks and balances will be the Excel, the spreadsheet that Jessica talked about. They're back up if we get audited, so.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think there is concern, I, even if we have enough to deploy right now, how, what the return rate will be. I mean, there, there may be some damage to some and, you know, Chromebooks at home, things happen and rely on them a lot, especially at the elementary level for some of our programs. So we definitely are interested in making sure we buy some if we can.
So this is Ben Bachmann. You know, I, I appreciate your willingness to answer all the questions in the document. And, you know, here for the board, we've had an opportunity to review, but there's clearly a lot of thought and time that has gone into this document. Jessica or Steve, do you mind? I mean, there, there's kind of seven parts here before you get to just the, kind of the bibliography in the end. Do you mind at a high level, just maybe take even a minute on each section, just talk about the categories? You don't have to go down into weeds, but just so that those who are listening right now can have the benefit of understanding all the time and thought that went into this and how the, the decisions involved around here are so much more than just what platform are we using? There's just so many different categories of things. Do you mind taking a little bit of time on, on just those parts for everybody? Thank you.
So, and I, I'm, we tried to give a more general overview of it to the community, so they won't have seen the plan that you guys have seen, so it's probably a good idea to go.
Yeah, that's why I think it'd be valuable.
So when we first started thinking that we would need to create a plan like this, we knew that spring break was coming. We knew that the governor was slated to speak right before we went on spring break. And we knew that several states, Kansas, Illinois, Virginia, had released plans. There was a lot of pressure to get something created and in front of our staff before they went on spring break. So we used what we had at the time, which were the plans from Kansas and Illinois, to try to guess what kind of guidance all the experts and professionals in the nation were giving these states who had already taken some steps before us. So every plan that I've seen starts with some foundational and philosophical thinking around how we need to be very flexible and adaptive and graceful during this time and that every plan is just a plan that until we're living it, we don't know what it'll be like. So the whole first section is intended to create a tone for the document that kind of extends that we care about people and that this is really hard and that we do want to do some remote learning and we have a plan for that. But first and foremost is we want to take care of our learning family and, you know, that, that's kind of the whole first piece of that document. The second part is about communication. And early on in this process, we were getting so much new information all the time. And one of the things we discovered is we wanted to make sure everyone knew whose job it was to communicate with someone else. So instead of waiting for information to come, who are you responsible for communicating to? So we created in the communication plan, all the different groups in our system and who they would communicate to in order to create the most consistent and clear process to get information to people as possible. We have gone through a couple iterations of this. We did have to shift from Zoom being our main mode of communicating with students to Google Meet due to some security concerns. Of course, everyone was comfortable with Zoom. Not always the best thing for people, they have to shift once they're comfortable with technology, but we have had to adjust a little as we go with communication because of the technology. But this document is meant to just give some parameters on what are we communicating in with who and how often. Then there's a section on the technology. You know, a lot of people have a lot of different experiences with technology. Our first priority was getting all kids on a platform. So we've been trying to get devices to as many kids as possible to create as equitable of an experience as possible. We know some students live in certain parts, especially, there's a couple places out in Diamonddale where wifi is really hard to get. And we do have some paper pencil packets we're going to be deploying, but we really value ongoing feedback and really wanted to get devices to as many students as possible. And really, right now, our numbers for paper packets are very small. We're talking like eight at the junior high, 10 at Diamonddale, like it's a pretty small number. So I'm, I'm pretty comfortable now saying that most of our kids, a very large percentage, have devices or will be getting devices. But we wanted some consistency with what devices we, platforms we use. It's stressful for families. I have three kids of my own and I'm also trying to work and my husband's trying to work and it's stressful for families to try to learn a whole bunch of different platforms. So we wanted to try to limit it to just a few, so that families could get comfortable with them. My child's wonderful fifth grade teacher just sent us a little video, a little tutorial on how to use Google Meet and how they're going to use Google Classroom and it was fabulous. So our technology teacher leaders have been working with our classroom teachers to get them comfortable on the platforms. And then within the plan, there's quick links. Someone just sent me like, if I get sent one more link to a good resource, I'm going to explode. There's a lot out there, so we're trying to limit it, it's going to get too overwhelmed. And then instruction, so the next piece is about our expectations with instruction. Much of this was guided by the executive order, by what we were hearing and seeing around the nation with both asynchronous and synchronous learning. This is really new for, for my teachers and they're often trained, they've trained their brains to think about how do they create learning experiences for kids to interact with each other? And now we're saying we need kids to be able to do these things at a time that works for them and their family. So they're rethinking all of their learning activities to try to give kids a lot more flexibility. In order to do that, you have to really reduce the number of targets you're trying to hit. So last week, we spent a whole week having our teachers identify common learning targets across to grade and across subjects. So we have a giant Excel spreadsheet that's like all the reading targets for third grade, all the math targets for third grade, K-12, every course. So we've got those targets, kept having to tell people fewer is better, simple, simple, simple. And they, I think, are starting as they design their weekly instruction to embrace that. Like, it seems like you could teach a claim or analysis of a text pretty easily over six weeks, but you can't, like, it's not the same. You don't see the kid every day, it's small 20-minute chunks, so fewer targets is better. And then we kind of went through with them suggested minutes. The suggested minutes are tough. We have adjusted a couple times because we keep getting different guidelines from different places. It's really tough too, and I was talking with, with one of you earlier, like the high school has such a big range, anywhere from 120 to 270 minutes. 270 minutes is insane amount of minutes. And my hunch is that 270, we, I think we stole that from Kansas or Illinois, is, is for kids who are taking two or three AP classes and prepping for upcoming AP tests. But I don't imagine students really would be on a device that many hour, or hours a day, even at the high school level. And then finally, there's an assessment section that goes through how important ongoing feedback is from teachers. So we're asking them daily to get on Google Classroom to connect with all of their students and give feedback on what thing turned in. We have flexible due dates, so students will be turning things in and getting feedback and retraining them in over and over for the targets that are chosen. So that formative feedback will be really important. Summit of feedback is meant to be more flexible, so that's what you guys might think about with tests or quizzes, like hard assessment grades. We're trying to be very flexible with those and let kids retake, as well as like being creative with different ways of showing they know something. So in the past, they may have taken a multiple choice test, what's, might not happen here. Here, they may be asked to make a little flipgrid video or have a Mac interview with a historic figure. Just, there's so many ways to do things different digitally. There is a section on what we might do with grading in the, in the plan. I know people are very anxious for a decision around grades for the high school. I think K8, we've landed where, where everybody else is and we are being thought, very thoughtful about this. We, I've met with teacher leaders a couple times, my administrators. We have a curriculum directors meeting where I'm curious to hear what other districts are doing. Oakhamist just released their plan on Friday and said the same thing we did. Still going to hold tight for just a little longer to, to hear what other people are doing. We're hoping to have a plan for high school that we can share with the public by the end of the week for grading. Then there's a section on English learners and special education. Our special education director has done so much work to get a plan for learning for, for students out there and we've linked to the different documents that she has created with her team. And then you see the timeline and it's crunch time, like the train left the station, things are happening and it's fast. And you could probably ask anyone, they're feeling a little bit anxious right now, but we're ready to launch Wednesday, our, our kids are getting devices, our teachers have their targets, our lesson planning and I, I think we're ready to go. I think that's the gist of it anyway.
Oh, that's helpful Jessica, I appreciate you doing that. And, and again, I know you're kind of first, you know, opening up to questions, but I wanted everyone to be able to hear and listen all the different sections and all the work that went into it. And if I could, I'd like to just, you talked about the opening narrative before the, you get into the different parts and sections. I want to just read one piece of that briefly. "Our first priority isn't always, has been, the health, safety and welfare of our learning community. This includes the physical, emotional and mental health of all of our people. This is a stressful time with many unknowns. Families have developed routines and some are coping with extreme hardship. While this document will repeatedly refer to teaching and learning embedded within that concept is the spirit of taking care of one another. We believe that teaching and learning is above all else communal activity. When we learn together, we become a community and a family." I just think that's exceptionally well-written and I think that it is very important to hit to the point that it, there's, there's mental health considerations to have for both families and parents and kids and, as well as staff, you know, you know, trying to do things in a different way where for staff, such a big part of being a teacher is, you know, classroom management, how you do that. And now you've got a whole, you can throw that book out the window, you've got a whole new system, you know, in terms of how you do that and you engage with kids. And we just all have to be really patient with each other. And, and I, I think to an extent that with this, maybe, I hope that we are learning some patience with each other as I, I'm on a conference call and, and I'm sorry, you know, I'll be pretty blunt, you know, but I'm on a conference call with a bunch of people. The other day, my four-year-old comes around in the room and says, Dad, I gotta poop. And you know what? We just have to be a little patient with each other. This is a different world and we have to calm down and recognize that we're all doing the best we can as parents and as teachers and as educators and leaders. So I'll get off my soapbox, but I just, I thank you for going through that and I think that it's important to recognize that the district, I think, is doing a really good job of being aware of those.
Thanks Ben. It has been hard, I'll be honest. I, we've talked with a lot of teacher groups last week, Zoom calls and I can hear it in their voices, the strain of just trying to balance. A lot of them have small kids at home, I, I do too and it's, it's hard and people will tell you, I went in my classroom and I just cried, like they go in to pick stuff up, they're allowed a little bit of time to get things and, and so many people posted on Facebook that night that they just went in and cried, like they miss work, they miss kids. And it's hard, this is really hard. But I, I feel like we've kind of found that balance of providing guidance, but a lot of flexibility for people. And that's been our intended tone all along, is that we're in it together and this is a collaborative process. And if something isn't working, let's address it and we'll try to do better.
Okay, any other questions for Steve or Jessica? Jessica, by the way, with three kids, that room behind you looks pretty tidy.
Well, I mean, that first week we were home and a lot of stress and I tend to like clean when I'm stressed out. So if my office is going to be in the basement, it's going to be clean. I couldn't take it anymore.
All right. Mr. Brown, if you could talk about your asphalt and skid purchase?
Good evening, it's nice to see everybody. I'm, I'm asking the board to take action on the proposed asphalt project. I believe everyone got a map and a picture of Washington Woods. There's four sections there. There's just a small section on the corner of Ermen and campus, or West Campus Drive, which is between here, North Campus and Horizon. And then a skim coat, basically a Band-Aid to get us by at the junior high. That's just going to be a real thin layer of asphalt, just to fill in the holes to get us by until we can, we have the funds to do that whole project over there, which is going to be expensive. The beds all came in lower than actually expected. I was pretty happy with that, some of that was timing. The, the bed winter was perfect, excavating incorporated and Charlie is. And Charlie has done work for Holt for probably about 10 years. I've worked with him a little longer than that. And the 487, 603 is a big number, but it's a lot of asphalt. And I believe in my professional opinion, we have a great need. Not just Washington Woods, most, most of our asphalt is past its life expectancy. And, and that's, and actually the, the Woods project isn't even all of it. If you looked at your map, it's the front three or four sections, the main drive, the place where the parents pick up and drop off and where the buses go. So, and then the skid steer, that kind of came out of nowhere. The one we currently have is quite old. It was purchased used, but I think about 10 years ago. The hydraulics went out on it and I took it into Bobcat of Lansing. And number one, they said they probably can't get the part. It would have to be a used part. And it would be between 2 and 2,500 to get to where they can see if that's really what's wrong and that's all that's wrong. And then that's if they can get the part. So they, they advised me to look for something else, which I did. I looked all over and I still came back to Bobcat of Lansing. They have a, I gave you the model number, but they have a decent used one, a model 5590 that has everything that we need. And it was 21,900 minus 2,000 trade-ins. So that brings it to 19,900. And, and I test drove it and it's got everything that we would need. So I would ask that, I just wanted to kind of let you know that's what I was looking at.
Yeah. My only question was about, I'm a lot more familiar with American asphalt than Perfect, but you've used Perfect, you said quite a bit, Rick?
Yes.
You're familiar with them?
The last two projects we've done here at Holt, Perfect has won. And before I got here, I believe you guys, I think the North Campus project was done by them. And, and then we used them in Oakhamus quite, quite a bit. He's local, Dansville Mason area. Smaller company can bid a little less, obviously.
Do you ever, are these all local, like, you know, you said as far as Dansville, but are these all local companies? Or have we looked past a little further than local?
So the way it works is I put it out on the Sigma website, state of Michigan. And anybody's, I believe anybody's allowed to bid on that that belongs to that. So these are the, these are the only ones that showed up.
Okay.
And I, it may have been that I was late, a little later. And companies already had the work and you know, the economy was booming and they already had the work lined up.
Right.
And again, with the timing though, in between that and the bid opening or the bid due date, things have started kind of falling apart. So I believe that had something to do with the better pricing. So I guess it's better to be lucky than good sometimes.
My only question is, it ties back with our work that we were just talking about with the instruction and maybe having more Chromebooks. I just want to be sure if we need to purchase more Chromebooks on this, this year's calendar. That, do we wait and buy that skid loader or whatever that thing is called? Sorry for not knowing the exact name. And put that on for next year. I'm just wondering about, I just want to be sure we have all of our students taken care of first. That's my only question.
I understand that. The biggest job that that machine does is load salt for us on, in our, in our salt truck in the winter time. But it also, for instance, we're going to take a, a piece of equipment out, a playground equipment at Midway that Heather Crandall's not allowed to have anymore because of the age of the kids. So I would need a piece of machinery like that to pull that out. It's not something you could do manually by hand or anything. And then there's a, it moves dirt and wood chips and things like that. So we, we use it quite a bit in the summertime. I mean, if, if you, if you didn't, if you weren't okay with it, we'd get by, but we really, we really could use that. And I gotta, I gotta have something for snow, for salt.
I'm not saying that not purchasing, I'm just worrying about the timing. And if, if we needed to rent something for a month or two to get you through and putting the big purchase for next year, I'm just throwing out some proposals. I just really want to be sure all of our kids have our needs at home right now. So
Sure.
That's my only question.
And I, I know with my budget this year and Ms. Cosgrove could probably help me out with that is that I, I believe I did pretty well spending that, that I had plenty of money left to, to make that purchase.
It's nothing against you at all and I support it. It's just the fact of where our education is turned. That's the only reason, Rick.
Sure, sure. I understand. Go ahead, Mr. Perry.
Are these 1920 expenditures or are these 2021 expenditures?
The asphalt would be next budget 21. The, the Bobcat or Skidsteer would be now.
Okay. And then at the junior high, that Band-Aid, how much is that and how long will that last?
It's $29,000 and two to three years it would, it will hold off. It'll stay pretty nice for two to three years. And then after that, it'll, it'll crumble.
And that's the whole parking lot?
It's no, it's the main traffic areas in the south, the large parking lot where it's really bad. And it will be mostly just paving the sections that are really bad. And I, I, I think, I think I put a map on your, on the board pack.
Yep.
You can kind of, even on the Google Earth, I believe you can see how bad it is from, from the satellite. Yeah, you can. You can see how bad it is. So it's, it's the main driving areas that, that they'll patch. And, and it'll be done well, but it won't last like a, a new parking lot will.
Those pictures are really helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just for my point of, just a clarification, how much is a new skid steer as opposed to the used one?
You know, Dr. Horneck, I didn't even price them because I know they're upwards of 85, say 80,000. And we don't need, we don't use it enough to, to justify that. And the used ones are pretty good.
Just wondering what kind of, what kind of deal that used one was.
After looking around, I looked at a lot and I looked here local too, the one in Hold on Cedar Street. Then I looked at a couple privately owned ones and I, I still ended up going back to Bobcat of Lansing. That is a local Holt family that owns that. About three or four Holt graduates also worked there and the owner's the whole graduate also. But the, what brought me back there was their service. And if ours ever goes down in the middle of the night, they'll, I could call the guy at home and he'll bring us one. I mean, that night. So that, that's, you know, I could have saved a few dollars on a local or excuse me, a privately owned one. But I, I kept going back to that service and that, that guarantee of that they're there and they're not going anywhere. And if an emergency did come up, they would, they would be there for us.
Yeah, I've rented equipment from them in the past and I was pretty impressed with them as well. So.
And that, that's another thing. I'm glad you said that. We can rent like a broom for it to do our own sweeping. We can rent a, a root grapple where you can pull trees out and shrubs out, which I plan on doing both of those if, if we get it soon. And it's nice that again, it's right down the street.
I will make a motion to accept recommendations for Perfect, or do you want to take these separately, President Perry?
Yeah, if we could.
And you want a 10% contingency on the asphalt?
On the asphalt only, not on the.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. I will make a motion then to accept the recommendation for Perfect excavating for the asphalt project at Washington Woods at their bid price, plus an additional 10% contingency.
Support.
I have a first and a second. Any additional discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
And I'll make, I'll make a recommendation or a, I'll make a motion to support the recommendation for the purchase of the skid steer from Bobcat at a price of 19,900.
I have a first.
I'll support you.
And a second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All right. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Laura, you opposed?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That moves us to the SRO report. And I think when I was scrolling through here, I did see Deputy Bellinger online. So if you are.
Yeah, I'm here. I'll be just real quick here. So month of March, responded to 35 calls for service, made 36 school checks, spent about 60 hours doing community policing and an hour in training. And then for the safer schools initiative, our deputies made 74 school checks for a total of 26 hours throughout the district. Big thing from this month was elections. We had the primary on March 10th. I had several buildings that were polling sites. You know, we were very present in those schools, providing extra security and, and visual presence. And I, I think they all went without a hitch. So that was good. Definitely not the crowd for the presidential election coming up, but definitely a good practice run for us to get ready for that and make sure we're prepared to provide you guys the best security we can if school's in session on that day. The other big thing from this month was March 24th. I met with Ms. Cosgrove and finalized the district's safety grant to be submitted. So looking forward to hearing back from the state police. Hopefully get some much needed things from them. So that's about it for the month of March. We're still doing good. Everyone's working and doing well. The sheriff's office and yeah. Good to see you guys. Hope you're all doing well as well. And if you have any questions, I'm willing to answer them.
Deputy Bellinger, how are we doing with the, the governor's order for the most part? You know, you're out and about. Are we abiding by it?
Yeah, we haven't had any major issues. A couple of calls here and there throughout the township for gatherings, things like that. But the businesses are doing great. No issues. I mean, as far as the schools go or anything like that. So we've been, been very fortunate. I think everyone, you know, in our community has been working hard to help curb the, curb the curve.
All right. Thank you. Dr. Horneck, I don't know if you're going to step in for Peter on the HR report?
Sure. I can just summarize. HR continues to work behind the scenes. We don't have anyone coming and going out of our offices right now, but or the, basically the March 4th to April 14th, however, the bulk of this is the front end of March. We had approximately 11 new hires. Some are just working in different positions. They've transferred or they're working for a third party. We have picked up another retiree and we have another resignation listed there. So kind of short and sweet today or this, this month.
All right. Thank you.
A minor thing, but just on the retiree on teacher number 10 on that line, just double check the spelling of that last name. Just so we have it going forward. Not a big deal.
Yeah, I can do that.
Thanks.
Brings us to financial matters and Ms. Cosgrove.
Good evening, everyone. I am just going to concentrate on the memo that I had and all of the items that we have going on. There still is a lot of items going on. We recently have, Rick Brown has opened up our buildings. He just had one individual person to come through on the energy bonds to finish those up. And hopefully in our May or June meeting, we will present or the initiative or the suggestion for the energy bonds. You would have the items there, the length and duration and the paybacks on there and what the total amount would be to borrow. And so we have to go through this process before we even introduce any of the other decisions that you would have to make. I'm not sure if they'll be done and ready for their presentation in May, so it could be pushed for June. And the request for proposals for the bond work, we had issued three requests for proposals for the architect, construction manager and owner's representative. Under your direction, we had original due date was April 2nd. And due to the order of stay home and stay safe, we had paused that. And the next opening will be May 1st. We are preparing for a Zoom public meeting for that and also accepting all the RFPs electronically instead of under paper. We have issued several addendums and we are getting ready actually with the attorney's review to issue our last hopefully addendum this Wednesday. And we are preparing to put the RFPs on our websites along with all of the addendums. We've had many calls and contractors reaching out. So I think you're going to have a good, robust options to look at. Debt fund will be presented in May and the food service budget, we usually do that in May also, excuse me, in, yeah, in May. But we're going to wait for June, just so that we can see what the actual budget ramifications are for the half a month in March, all of April. And then we could do some speculation on the May and June to get you a better budget where we're going to be with food service. And then the last item that you were given was a large document and it was for information purposes. We most definitely know that there will be changes in the 1920 budget because there are just pure expenditures that will not be used. There won't be extra help or overtime. And so it is easy for us to quickly come up with a list that we know things won't happen because people are not in their buildings. The other part that we're working on right now are where are other areas that we are reducing right now? So that what the intent is, is to do a budget update in June and try to capture all those unused funds. Do you have a pretty good sense of any extra amount you will be able to carry over in your fund balance for the 2021 school year? In the 2021 school year that you see, we certainly have heard lots of comments that there will be a reduction in our state aid. We have to remember that we also have the student side of that calculation too. We're already calculating a reduction in students because we have cohorts that are being reduced. In the assumption that I showed you, I made the total reduction approximately 5% of our total budget. You can get there any way you want. What we're hearing from the state of Michigan is the reduction will be somewhere between 5 and 11%. So that is a pure number without any backup of any federal stimulus. So there are so many moving parts. There's so much speculation and we have not gotten any word from the state of Michigan. There's supposed to be a May revenue consensus conference of which there are hush whispers that that's going to be postponed. So we gotta let, we gotta let some time go by and we have to let our state legislatures. The intent of the document was to show you what a hole of 5% would be. And then also the, a first pass at budget items that could be identified to not be spent. So we could spend the rest of the evening on all the assumptions, but that was not the point of the document. The point of the document is the magnitude of what we have to cut.
Hey, Kim.
Yeah.
When you save five to 11%, so just rough math, are you like on a per pupil basis? That that would be, what's that? 400, 800 dollars per pupil?
Right.
Really? Wow.
So, so now I gave you the Ed Week article because it says that the stimulus money came to the state of Michigan. But it had to promise to give, and it says in order to access the federal stimulus money, that states have to agree to the same average funding, education funding over the three prior fiscal years. And that for me is a hook because we don't talk about average education funding. You usually have your per pupil allocation and you have your categoricals. So a state could say, well, I'll give you that average over for a per pupil funding and then start to cut categoricals. And that's why my presentation had a little bit of both on there. Just to show you, there are options that our state may have to reduce. So most, we just need to think about the state budget in total, not just per pupil funding, but also the categoricals that are in there.
Well, thank you, Ms. Cosgrove, for putting this together. Um, and we do know that it's gonna change, hopefully for the better. But um, very good information to have in case we do have to make some cuts. And probably the best course of action for us to land this current fiscal year is best we can. So that we can carry over those funds in a surplus um, into the following year. But knowing that that following year is still gonna be um, tough.
I know, I just have a couple of questions. Um, the reductions identified by finance, I don't know what number slide that is. It's a hundred and eighty one on the public list. It's the one with the purple at the top?
Yeah.
I just am wondering, so if we have people that are, um, when you say reductions at secondary. Are these people that are retiring or that is that according to our um, pupil count?
At this point in time, they are open positions by someone resigning, already given us their resignation or um, their retirement letter.
Okay, I just was wondering on that, okay. Um, I had one other question. So do you have any idea about like gasoline, um, electricity? What kind of savings we will have these last few months? Would, do you think that would be significant at all or is it just pennies?
No, actually, I think if you go back up to on the PowerPoint, one seventy five.
Okay.
One seventy five, I have facilities, utilities.
Okay.
Hundred and twenty five, and then there's facilities, all other. And so I can see that there wasn't, there, um, Rick Brown had his allocation for infrastructure. And he has not spent all of that from this year, so there will be some others. And that actually, that portion is smaller than I think it will be. And I feel comfortable with that skid in this current current year being purchased.
So with those reduction expenditures, could we use any of that money for technology if needed?
Yes.
Okay.
And we will, we will update our budget in June, so if they are needed and we transfer money, you will approve it.
Okay, great. Thank you. That was really helpful.
Yep, that's all I had.
Okay, any questions? All right, thank you. So we'll move to the calendar, Dr. Horneck. I don't know if there's some dates uh, that you can point out to us.
It's a thin uh, calendar. Uh, most of it's been purged, as you know, due to the shutdown. We have our next board meeting, which is approximately three weeks from now. The April meeting swings a little longer from away from the March meeting due to our uh, scheduled spring breaks. Um, as a result, then the next one comes a little sooner. So we're back together on the eleventh and we'll either be in person or. Uh, meeting again in this capacity and some sort of, you know, uh, way or another. I do still have uh, graduation on the calendar for May thirty first, okay? So uh, on a weekly basis, uh, superintendents from Ingham County come together. And uh, while we're starting to imagine what graduation could look like. Uh, everyone still has their graduation scheduled and so do we at this point. Um, and then our following that, we have our uh, June board meeting on June eighth. Short look at the calendar.
All right, thanks.
So, Dr. Horneck, have you gotten any indication from the Breslin Center about canceling, they they canceling events under you? As opposed to you canceling events from them?
They are hoping that we will continue to push it out. If we don't meet the May thirty first. That they would, you know, look to later in the summer or down the road a little bit. So. No, the the answer to your question, it, we don't, we haven't had that conversation, but they, we. Some of us have been in contact with the Breslin and they're, they're proposing some additional dates.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll move to old business. If nothing there, new business?
I just wanted to touch on what Ben said earlier about um, mental health. I know our educators are. Working their butts off to make sure that their students are getting what they need. Through pencil, paper, Chromebooks, mental health, but I just wanna make sure that we're also checking on our educators. To make sure that they're in a good mental space, emotional space. I've had a lot of discussions over the last couple of weeks with educators that aren't feeling real confident with themselves. And because they don't, this is new territory for all of us. So I just wanna make sure that our um, curriculum directors and our administrators are checking in. Our uh, educators, parapros, custodians, cooks. Just everybody uh, across the board. I think that's pretty important right now.
I have something we need to um. Approve the two resolutions that I spoke about earlier. And if we can or for interested in doing, um, we can just do a first reading on the nine policies that are included in the packet. Or we can waive the first reading and take a vote. It's up to, you know. But we we definitely have to do the resolutions tonight.
You said earlier that most of the policy was basically updating based on changes to the law. Is, was there anything in there that we needed to make decisions on?
We have to get him compliant with the law. There's one that we um, there's one that we have is brand new that we haven't touched and it's not included in this pack packet. That we were tabling and that was uh, care for students with chronic health conditions. And then also one regarding attendance. Uh, the other nine are included in the board packet with the proposed changes. And uh, those were clarifying language and cleaning up language and the bulk of them had to do, um, came from pupil accounting office. Uh, state of Michigan pupil accounting. Uh, but the two resolutions are an absolute must that we need to do. And then again, we could um, either call, look at this as a first reading on the other policies. Um, and vote on them next month or we can waive, it's up. I I don't have a preference, but it's basic language changes required by the state of Michigan.
When you say the two resolutions, there's one resolution giving Dr. Horneck emergency powers. What's the other one?
Correct. Um, it's right below it. It um, adds more to that emergency power resolution. Let me.
Yeah, what pages are these on?
I think they started at one oh four. Usually I have two spots on the agenda when we're doing, when we're doing these and I did not. Realize this time that I did not have two spots on the agenda. So I apologize.
It was all getting ready for my famous motion.
Well, so one oh four starts the policies and the resolutions were attached to that.
See page one twenty three and one twenty four or one twenty five?
Yeah, here we go. One twenty three. That um. Yep. That's the second one and then the first one.
That was on page one twenty five.
Yeah.
I was a little confused by that because it looked like the first one was very long and the second one was rather short and to the point. And I couldn't tell what the difference was between them.
Right, because if I remember correctly, the the shorter one was the one that came first and it. Was an emergency granting of of the powers. And then the second one, there was more detail in it.
You know, that might be because I think I just disregarded the first one because the second one seemed to be more comprehensive. And I thought we would only do the second.
Yeah, no, they were two, they're actually, the way I read it in the packet is that they were two separate. Ones that needed to be done.
Right, and on the nine, I didn't see anything that struck me to be out of the ordinary. Um, I mean, I would be willing to waive the.
Yeah, there were, there were no choices on those that we hadn't already made. It was just a cleaning up of language.
Pretty simple.
Yeah, but if there's board members that wanna spend some more time reading those, I, you know, I'm up for that too as well.
Fine with my first, my reading of it already, so, but if other people wanna do it, that's great.
I'm fine waving it too.
So Dr. Hallgren, I would take a motion from you?
Uh, so I will move to a, so what am I doing? I'm moving to approve the changes to the nine policies that were.
Neala comes and actually reads our board minutes, so we need to have them spelled out. Um, so how about, I will make the motion.
Yeah, that'd be good.
To adopt the revisions to policy twenty two, ten, twenty four, twelve, thirty three, sixty two point oh one. Forty one, sixty two, sixty one, oh seven, eighty two, ten, eighty four, hundred. Eighty four, sixty two and eighty six, hundred.
And I will support that motion.
I have a first and a second. Any questions? Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. And so you need a motion on the two resolutions, correct?
Yes, one is for executive order to comply with executive order thirty five. And the other just grants the emergency powers to the superintendent.
I'm still struggling to see how these are different, but uh, that being said.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution five and resolution six. As included in board packet.
I'll second.
I have a first and a second. Any discussion, questions?
I think it looks like the first one has this um, third portion to the resolution. That includes the authority to enter into contracts without board approval.
Yeah.
And the second one does not have that third item.
Correct, so one covers um, originally just covered third, uh, executive order thirty five, the other.
Okay, so executive order twenty twenty twenty, I got you. Okay, I understand now. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you, Amy, yes.
Any other questions, discussions? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
President Perry, we have uh, Mrs. Colligan on the phone. She lost connection, so she said aye as well.
Okay, thank you.
I have her right here.
Sorry.
All right, any additional new business? And at this time, we don't have a need to go into closed session. So, Mr. Bakken.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
And first, second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All right, thank you.